Get to her seat. And we will call this meeting to order. All right, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to our study session for tonight, Monday, June twenty four, two thousand and twenty four. For the record, all members of council are present with the exception of Ms. Fraus, who says she will be five minutes late. So we will make a note of when she arrives. All right, so. Just a few items to talk about. I don't know that this is, this, this might be the shortest study session we've had so far. There's a potential for that. All right, the first item on here under the discussion items is a development fund, American Rescue Plan Act approval, approve a resolution authorizing the use of ARPA funds in the Development Fund for Community Improvement Projects, including nuisance abatement, revolving loans, and other projects as approved by council, not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Mr. City Manager.
I'll turn this over to Ms. Horner.
Ms. Horner.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this resolution I prepared and it, it wasn't presented to you guys ahead of time, so I wanted to take time to um, talk about it with you. Um, we, at the last meeting, we had some discussion on the funding amounts that we could give to some of the still eligible um, loan recipients. And so not knowing what the desire of council was going to be on those things, and also wanting council to have the flexibility to use this money as it was intended, which would be for these loans and for abatement. I thought perhaps what we could do is just put a new resolution into place, saying that these funds can be used within the Development Fund for either at the pleasure of council, basically. So you'd still need to approve it, but it will stop us from having, from hitting that two hundred and sixty five thousand dollar limit. Or the two hundred and thirty five thousand dollar limit for abatements, and that still means you guys are authorized, and we're still closing the application period, so we're not reopening the application period. But because we still have those three applications that you're considering, that you might want to increase some funds for any of the recipients, and you wouldn't have to necessarily barter that away from another recipient or whatever council chose to do. So that was the reason I put this together. I feel like it just gives council a little bit more um, leeway when you're considering those proposals to make a decision that you're comfortable with based on the funding amounts instead of the arbitrary limit that we kind of put in place for ourselves. So um, I'm happy to answer questions for that. And then I have a lot more, well, not a lot, but some more information to talk about on the RLF program as well, and some of the things I've discovered since the last meeting, so.
Right, council members, questions for Ms. Horner.
Um.
Go ahead, Ms. Hart.
Um, I, I think that's a really reasonable idea to put those, those things into a, a single package, just because we are coming up on, we may have more business uh, applicant loans and being able to have a little flexibility there. I think that the idea of keeping a sizable piece of it still for abatement, because I know we have abatement programs that are still in progress or still on the list to get progress. So I would like to see that. I think that this is a reasonable way, a fair way to go about further using those, those particular funds.
Yeah.
Well, not necessarily. We're not accepting any app, more applications, right?
Well, at the previous meeting, when we discussed um, the previous resolution to increase the funding, that previous resolution did say that at that time we were exhausting the funding and closing the application period. And my recommendation would be not to reopen that right now, because there's a lot of issues with the program that I want to get ironed out uh, before we actually put it back out and accept new applications. Plus, I think maybe waiting till closer to the end of this year. When we start seeing some of those payments come back in, we might want to look at relending those out as well, but with um, you know, us coming up on the deadline for um, for ARPA funding obligations, you know, I'm not sure that it would necessarily be in the best interest of people applying if we aren't intending to actually issue any more loans to have it open.
I thi- I think um.
Ms. Hart.
Unless somebody else has something they want to jump in.
Their hand was up.
Okay, so I think that's, I, I think that's a reasonable uh, request uh, from us as to maybe just we have, we, we found out there's some few things in there that we want to finish, fix up uh, with the, in the program itself, the revolving loan program. I think that that's reasonable, and we can come back with another, you know, uh, three month uh, period where people could apply for those funds now that we know that we can, if we choose to vote that way uh, to help people out with, with those revolving loans. I think, I think the right idea is to hold off till we got all the paperwork is figured out more clearly than it was or has been. And uh, I think that's, I think that's a reasonable, reasonable idea. That way, nobody gets in trouble there.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Fraus, because I saw you moving your microphone around. Were you intending to?
No, I, it was just far.
Okay. Sometimes when I see people moving the mic, I'm just like, okay, they've got something to say, so. All right, so you know, my comments on this, um. First of all, I think I, I'm kind of in favor of closing the applications for a period of time. Um, I think, uh, based on our last regular meeting, uh, there's some gaps that need to be filled in and things that need to be clarified in the application process so that we have a better idea of what has been filled in and what, what's expected of all of us. So we need to clean that up a little bit. And also, I'd like to see us start getting some payments back. Because you know, it is a result revolving loan fund, and if we don't get payments back, well, it's not going to revolve very well. So we need to make sure that that process is working, but yeah, I mean, the principle is always that we are going to have a period of time where these applications are open. And so just may not happen right away, but we need to clean that up. And so I agree with that as well. I do have a question, Ms. Horner. It's just about feasibility and what you're talking about as far as um, other projects as approved by council. I had an interesting conversation with the folks from the uh, Miss Sunnyside Court. And apparently, they've got this really cool float that they have to drag around all the time at the parades, because it doesn't operate under its own power. Um, the float's been a bit of an issue for the last couple of years as far as running. It hasn't run well. For the record, uh, Council Fraus has arrived. Um. Does repairing the community float fall in any way, shape, or form under inappropriate use for these funds?
I would not think that this, these would be appropriate funds for that.
Okay.
Um, I think that using funds that are regularly budgeted of the general fund, like we, we did this year with that five thousand dollar chunk um, for basically, we, we did it under like, community events type thing, because you know, it's, it's part of like, the community, right? It's community float. That's kind of the justification for it, but I don't know that it falls under something for the Development Fund.
Okay, if, if we could figure out a way to repair that thing to where it's reliable. Um, they were telling me about one float that one of the girls was driving via remote. Um, I don't think we have to do that, but these kids are going around all over the state of Washington, showing off our city, looking really good, and then our floats getting drug along because it won't run. And I hate to have that be the impression that people are getting of Sunnyside, when we've got these girls that have put so much work into decorating that thing and setting it up, and they look so good, and they're, they're really, you know, serving Sunnyside well. And uh, we can only hand them something that barely runs, so. Um, yeah, if, if, and I apologize, I would have called you today. I didn't have a chance to get to the phone today, so um, anyway, that was my question.
Can I just tag a team on that one? It seems like that the uh, float people have come various times to the LTAC and asked for monies for emergency funds for uh, repairs on the float and sometimes decorations, but mostly the money that the LTAC uh, uh, presents to the uh, float committee is for repairs and upkeep on the float. And um, if I could ask City Clerk, the last time, do you recall the last time we gave the float some money?
Well, we.
Do you, do you know?
Yeah, we gave them money this year from the general fund and two thousand dollars out of LTAC. And I think in the last few years, the funds that they get from LTAC, they use to pay for their insurance.
Yeah.
For the vehicle to be able to operate, because I, the justification for it being able to qualify under LTAC is it's out there with the word Sunnyside on it, going out into various communities and basically advertising for our, for our city to have people come here. And so, you know, using it for insurance or, or decorations or something like that seems reasonable. We, we said that we would help with the funds for repair under the general fund side this year, so that would be um, you know, a broader conversation, I guess, during the budget process. And you know, also kind of ties into some of the other conversations that we've had about what is a city-sponsored, you know, community project or community event and sort of figuring out what those parameters are. Um, you know, that's probably part of a great discussion that we need to have during budget process.
Thank you.
Okay, I didn't mean to stir up the pot and.
Oh, no.
It was completely out of line, but that was the question I spent on my mind all weekend, so. All right, further questions or comments on the first item here? All right, let's move on to item B, revolving loan fund request, and we'll start with the one from Despecho LLC. Uh, they're requesting fifteen thousand dollars. Reprove a, re, approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds to Despecho LLC. All right.
So um, just sort of continuation kind of of the last conversation, and for the next two, in addition to this one, I'll just start off by saying. So I did go back and I reviewed the processes for the previous um, loans that the council has approved. And we have, you guys have at this point authorized loans to four businesses, only three of which have drawn the funds yet. The fourth has not drawn the funds, and the reason, part of the reason for that is that they did not have a complete application. So it seems that what we had done before is the commission approved the business's idea, what they wanted to do with the funds. The application wasn't complete, but they went ahead and forwarded it on to council. Council approved the funding for that, but we haven't issued that contract to that individual, because they didn't provide all of the backup documentation that they would need in order to, to receive the funds. So I did leave them a message as well to let them know, you know, we're still sitting on your award, and we need to get your contract in place, but in order to do that, you know, you need to provide these other documents. So being that was sort of the precedent that was set with this kind of loose, I, we, we didn't have a lot of very specific uh, directions for how the process was going to happen, what exactly the roles of all of the different individuals were going to be. And so based on the fact that that's how we handled the previous one, I think that it would be in the best interest of the council to continue that for the next three. This one for Despecho did not, or did have a complete application, so there were no issues with their application. They originally requested twenty five thousand dollars. And as a new business startup, they would qualify for up to twenty five thousand dollars. Their award was recommended at the fifteen thousand dollar level, based on the threshold of funding that was initially available. Um, that was the recommendation from the Community and Economic Development Commission. And um, the mayor and I spoke, and I hadn't had a chance to talk to Ben about this, but um, I, I actually kind of have a different opinion of Ben, and we, maybe it's a good time to have a discussion on this about whether or not changing the award amount does need to go back to the commission. I, I think in, in other types of commissions that do this, which would be the, the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission, there's very strict RCWs saying that uh, you know, recommendations for funding have to go back to the, the commission for forty five days to be reviewed before they can come back to council. But this is, this is sort of a voluntary commission that we had, that we, we put into this process, so I don't know. I, and I would love to get your feedback on that, but I don't know that we necessarily need to send it back to the commission if the council wants to increase the award.
If you want to increase the award, no, you don't have to send it back.
Okay.
Decrease it, you do have to send it back to the commission.
Okay.
Excuse me, would that also apply to uh, sending back a um, application that maybe wasn't complete? Send that back to the, back to the commission?
I, I think at this point, obviously, the council can, it's at the council's pleasure whether they choose to approve applications, but based on the fact that there were other applications that were already approved and funded that didn't have a complete application. I'm not sure that I would necessarily suggest that. But it is up to the council what you choose to approve or not to approve.
Well.
And, and the previous one, you didn't send back to the commission. You did go ahead and approve it. We're just not releasing the funds until we get the application. The, the materials completed that we would need to release the funding.
So that could be true in this case as well.
Correct. And so the other two applications, not this one, but the other two that you have before you tonight are also actually, one of them is complete now, but this, the third one is not. I still haven't received all of the information that would be needed for that one. And it's the same information kind of that I'm missing from the other, that we were missing from the other one that was funded. And so if to, for consistency, you could go ahead and fund it if you chose to, if you wanted to fund it. And then at the same, you know, we could hold the, the contract until we release, until we received the required information, but that's just how it's gone so far.
Well, from my perspective, I think we've set a pers, uh, precedent for this year. And probably want to stick with that and make incorrect policy changes to clean these things up for, for the next round. Um, but it wouldn't really be fair to approve funds for one organization based on this information that we have, even if it's not complete, and then to not approve it for another organization that's missing the same or, same information. Um, we approved it once, probably should continue to approve it, but not release the funds, like you said, until we get all the correct information. But that being said, for the next round of applications, I want to clean up our process so that um, until the application is completely, fully filled in, then we don't, we don't even see it at the council level. Ms. Fraus.
Um, for clarification, so I was, I was one of the ones that was really confused the last time that, I think it was the last council that, meeting that we were at, um, uh, talking about the, 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 the applications. Um, I didn't think that we had approved Taylor Footwear. I thought, I thought we had sent it back, or am I confused again?
Didn't, you have not approved Tailored Footwear, Bonvinos, or Despecho.
We have not approved any of them.
It's before us tonight to approve those.
Okay.
You're saying that they are, we've already approved a prior one?
So what happened in the past, the first round, some of those did not, or one of those did not have their application fully filled out. And what's missing in the applications before us tonight is the same, excuse me, material that was missing in that previous application that we've already approved. Funds have not yet been released until we have that information filled out.
Haven't lost it.
So we haven't lost anything, but um, we set a precedent for this year. But going forward and as we, now that the applications are closed, we can go in and, and look where we need to tighten things up a little bit, and I think that we need to do that, but if we're, we've already got that precedent set, I think we need to continue in that process.
And I apologize for causing some confusion as the deputy mayor reached out as well about not putting the applications back in. There was no new information that needed to be on the applications, and they were in the last council packet, so I just added the materials that you didn't have, which was the contract and the updated resolution for those three applications. So the information that's in tonight's council packet is the contract that um, we worked with on the attorney for each of those, and then the updated resolution with the correct information.
Okay, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, so I remember on the, on the first round, um, after the application wasn't there, and I remember asking Mr. Martin if, if he had gone through you know, the applications during the meeting, and, and he said that he had. So I kind of based my decision based on his response that he had actually, you know, gone through the application and make sure that, that they were completed. Um, I know you say that we don't want to, you know, there's a precedent that we did it once, and we should do it again, but I think, you know, we, we found a mistake and, and we should clean up a, a mistake and you know, try to fix it.
All right, other comments?
I agree with that. Yeah, I have a question. So I just want, for clarification, a lot of, a lot of, um, okay, I'll re, restart this sentence. So for clarification, can council um, request to drop them out or to, or to pick up them out?
It's gonna be a, either a reduction in the amount awarded or a denial of that amount. It needs to be sent back to the commission with the recommendations from City Council.
Okay, council is able to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Send it, to send it back.
Send it back.
Because it was, it was to my, my knowledge, what I had been told was, you know, right now that it was just a recommendation, and it's going to be brought forth to council, and then council can always change the amount. And I was hearing some comments that that wasn't true, and I just wanted to clarify and put that on the record.
Okay, council has a lot of authority. Uh, typically, once it gets passed on from the commission to council, it comes as a recommendation, which implies that the commission has read through the material thoroughly and is able to make that recommendation with confidence. And then council can, if they wish, move forward and go ahead and approve that, because the commission has done, has done that part of the job. Um, it typically, I mean, for us as council members, yes, it's, it's correct for us to read through that application ourselves. And we can ask appropriate questions, but we don't necessarily have to do the investigation the way that, that the uh, commission does. Um, so.
Which, which, uh, which is understandable. I never made no, no investigation. If anything, I was just present at the, at the meetings. And I heard stuff that I wasn't hearing from other prior ones, so I just had more questions. And when I had those questions, I was told I couldn't ask those questions until it was my turn. So when I was here, I thought that as my turn.
Okay. Very good. All right, further comments or questions?
Real quick, if I could, from, from a legal standpoint, for all of this too, the application process is very important. The reason being is because what that's supposed to do, in part, is verify that these individuals who are applying um, are, are qualified to receive these loans from the ARPA funds. And that way, only have a complete application if, God forbid, you re-ared it or reviewed, because you're supposed to determine how to use these funds. You can show you met all the criteria through the application. So when you have applications that aren't completed, I was trying to encourage you not to disperse funds until those have been completed, so you show that you meet the qualifications for that. And that prevents liability to the city for a dispersal occurred.
And, and then.
Which, which serves why we have not yet dispersed the funds, correct?
Well, and that's what I was going to say. So there's, there's multiple ways we could set the process up, though, and I don't think we ever worked through those particulars when we put the program in place to begin with. So just like a lot of other organizations that you can request funding from. Um, for instance, like if we were to go and request funding from like our state representative or something, the, the state can, can approve the funding and, and the, the, the Washington State Congress or whatever representatives can say, yeah, we're going to approve this funding, but then the applicant still has to go and provide a bunch of backup information in order for that funding to be spur, dispersed through the Department of Commerce. And so I've worked on other ones like that. So, so in theory, what I'm thinking is that's kind of how it seems the process was with the other one that didn't have all the documentation. The commission saw the application, said, yeah, this is a great use of funds. We would like to refer it to council. Council said, yeah, we would like to, to do these funds, but when it came down to seeing if they, we, if the city had enough information to disperse the funds, we did not, based on what was incomplete from the requirements. So we have held on to those funds until we, until we get all of the required documentation. I think that's a perfectly reasonable way to do this process if that's what the council wants. And, and in reality, that's what staff's job is to do, especially in my department with finance, to make sure that we're not giving money out to anyone who shouldn't be allowed to have it in any way. So we're used to doing that stuff, and so I guess it just depends on what, how council wants to establish the various roles of the commission, the council, and staff in this process, you know? Because theoretically, the commission could look at a business and they could say, okay, we see that you have a great idea. Um, but maybe you're a branding business, so you don't have history or um, you know, financials to show us, and so we, we want to approve you. And council could be like, yes, we think it's a great one too, and you're not necessarily going to need to see, you're not going to necessarily know to, if you want to see people's personal credit profiles or all of these other things. Staff could do that, you know, after the funds are approved by you, if you like the idea. Or, and then we don't disperse the funds, or you could say, well, no, we want to see all of that stuff beforehand. Either way, i- it's, it's having the applicant do the work upfront before they get the chance to, to ba- basically pitch their idea, or having them pitch their idea and see if they're approved before they go and do that work for a new business or something like that, after the work, after the fact. For a new business, I could see why that might be a preferable way for them to do it, because it takes a lot of work sometimes to put a, a business plan together or something like that. And so if you, if you're, if, whether or not you open your business is going to hinge on whether or not you get this funding. They may not choose to go through all of that if, by the time it gets to the commission or to council, they're going to say, no, we don't like your idea. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. There's another thing too, that I think if we look through the application, and this is something I know that Karen and I have both talked about, is it says in there that they should have five years of experience in the business that they're talking about. So they can't just say, oh, well, I want to open a shop, you know, to serve you, uh, I don't know, fudgicles. Um, but you got to have five years of experience in that particular business. And I think that if we look back at the application, I'm pretty sure it says that in there somewhere. We had a lot of discussion, it came up both with Adams Wonderland and again with um, just Despacho, Despacho?
Despacho.
Despacho, because neither one of those businesses had the experience, well, the first one, Adam's Workshop, didn't, but they felt like it because it was an unusual business, they decided they would fund it. The thing with the Despacho was that it had been a restaurant, even though the person making the applicant didn't have any, any um, uh, management skills in hospitality and restaurating, um, other, other areas. So they felt that that was sufficient. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of different little.
And I, I took a lot of time to look over the um, the parameters and the application, and I do have to agree with our friends who applied and said that this was a, a terribly difficult process. And the application was incredibly complex. I don't, I don't like it either. Um, I don't think the parameters were necessarily very clear, and I think for a new business or a, a long-term business, there are going to be different sorts of things that you're going to want. And so um, I, I would like the opportunity to revamp it kind of altogether and bring you guys sort of a better, maybe not better, I, I don't mean to disparage the play the program was put together to begin with, but bring you a more clear path for how we go forward with these. Um, however, that being said, I also have looked at the three applications that you have before you this evening, and I don't see any huge red flags with them, aside from the fact that, like I said, there are some business documents that are still missing on one of the applications, and we wouldn't release the funding until we receive those. And that one, just for clarification, is for Bonvinos.
So to make, just to clarify in my mind, this is kind of similar to then what you're saying is getting pre-approved, pre-approved for a home loan. You don't have your loan, but you've got your paperwork mostly filled out, and then you do the house shopping process, and then you fill out and make sure you get all the, the rest of the paperwork done.
Basically, so I'm saying we could do it that way. We don't have to, but we could say that council is lit, is authorizing the, the distribution of the funds, sort of, should all of the things come together and their application is complete for them to accept the funding. Otherwise, we would consider them like declining the funding, and after a certain time period or something, we could say, okay, the funding is going to go back into the, into the pool, if you didn't get the things that you needed to do to get together to accept it.
Kind of, I kind of like the idea of having a pre-app. That would eliminate some of maybe the major hurdles of, of the whole application, and they could decide whether or not they wanted to go for it or not um, before they went through all that, as you suggested, all the materials that they need to, to bring forward for the, the rest of the loan. It is a loan, and they will pay it back, and we will collect on it. And it's usually a three percent um, interest rate, so it's, you know, I mean, we're going to get our money back one way or another to get used for other future projects, but I want you to remember that too.
And I believe of the four loans, the three that we have actually issued have made on time three, or two payments up to this time, up to this point, I think, and their next one will be due shortly, so. Everybody's on track so far that we have um, given money out, which is great.
All that being said, the question that's before us now is the resolution to authorize the distribution of the funds to Despecho. Comments on that particular item?
And my main comment, sorry not to bring it back, but was to just say, and I didn't put it on the sheet, because I didn't know how council was going to feel about this, and whether or not you were going to pass the resolution to sort of make the funding more flexible out of the Fund One Seventy, but they did initially apply for twenty five thousand dollars, and so theoretically, council could amend the, the resolution to increase that, according to what Ben is saying, to the twenty five thousand dollars if you pass the previous resolution, and that's what council would like to do, so just put that out there.
I would like to do that.
Okay, and that would have to be brought up during the regular meeting when Despecho comes up as the question. Then we can say, I, you can make the motion to amend that. And uh, we can go that route.
And speaking of, um, I did tell, since Tailored Footwear and Despecho were here at the last meeting and answered lots of questions on their proposals, um, they were not told that they needed to come back necessarily. They obviously were told that they could. Um, but Bonvinos, since they hadn't prevent, presented to you guys yet, I did tell them that they should be here um, to answer questions, so just FYI.
Okay, so we have one person to mention that they'd like to increase that. Um, I didn't see anybody shaking their head saying, no, I don't ever want to do that, so it doesn't seem like there's a lot of objection to that, so that that can be brought up during the motion and go that way. Ms. Hart, you were going to say something?
I just, I just want. I just I just wanted to to reiterate on one thing. You said that the only person who still needed to have. The rest of their paperwork in is Bonvino.
That's correct.
And all of tailored footwear and all the despacho are they're all they're all taken care of.
They are consistent with everything that we've required from any of the other loans that were distributed.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
What are they missing? Cuz I I'm looking through the application from last meeting and it looks like it's all there from Bonvinos.
Well, some of the things that are required aren't part of the application packet, and we wouldn't put on their information. It's like business tax information. Is what we're still missing from Bonvinos.
Still, you know, kind of in private.
All right, so that's that one. A lot of what was just said before applies to the others as well. So item C revolving loan fund request from tailored footwear footwear for forty-five thousand. Approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds to tailored footwear. Comments or questions on this item? Ms. Hart?
I I kind of I kind of believe since we spent so much time explaining all of the ins and outs of it with this um with item uh. B, I think the same things apply here. Um if we wanted to increase the amount. Um we could, but I think since she's now in in right in, as you just said. In compliance as per the way it goes.
The only item she was missing was the business plan, and so I worked with her um on what a sort of a simple business plan is, and we pulled. The information really was already accessible in all of the other. Application materials that she had provided, and they just it just sort of needed to be reorganized. Into a business plan fashion, which we did, and that was no problem. And so that's that's been taken care of for her.
Good, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
The collateral was also missing on on hers.
Um so at this point, none of the while some of the applications have had collateral listed. None of the applications that even have been funded to this point that had collateral listed have had any. Um recommendation from the commission to have collateral securing the loan. And so at this point, that hasn't been the recommendation from the commission, even though it's been listed on on the items. So for tailored footwear, the collateral is the is the. Inventory that was purchased. She has three hundred thousand dollars worth of inventory. That was the revolving credit card that she is trying to refinance is what she uses to purchase her inventory. And so there's forty-five thousand dollars, I believe, is what she said, that's an outstanding debt on that. Which she's prior to COVID, used to pay off regularly, but because of a few short months of. Business, she wasn't able, but she still has that three hundred thousand dollars. Worth of collateral and stock that's actually physically in her store and on her shelves.
So there is collateral.
There is. Um it would be a matter of whether or not council wants to. Is that something that they would need to have the commission recommend, Ben?
Yeah, and if that's what the council wants, cuz there's a modification of the terms.
Of the terms, okay. Yeah. So while the application has requested it on all of these, the commission has never indicated. That they are recommending a loan to be secured with collateral to this point.
So worst case scenario, she defaults, right? Um is the city gonna collect the three hundred thousand dollars worth of shoes? I mean, I don't think the city should be in the business of. Collecting three hundred thousand dollars worth of worth of shoes, you know, worst case.
Or forty-five thousand.
Yeah, or you know, whatever she owes at the time. Um. I don't know. I I I thought for some reason that we had that collateral on there and 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 I like. That it's on there cuz you know, the other businesses I see that they have properties, you know, it's it's I guess it's a little bit better to to sell property than to sell um. Shoes. So that's just my concern.
But I guess what I'm saying is. She has uh she has assets, and so if we needed to foreclose on the loan. There are assets, and maybe Ben knows more about like how how the legal parameters for how to do this. And and if we had collateral on the application, then we would be getting shoes. Which is what we you're saying you don't want to do. Is that correct, Ben?
Yeah, so yes, that's what I'm saying. And so if if she pledges certain assets as collateral. The city would take a UCC one against those. And then, God forbid, if she got to the point where she she couldn't pay the loan when due, then the city could take action to enforce it against that or just her personally. And then as part of that, you can um foreclose on your secured interest. And the collateral she pledged in that situation. Once again, judgment judgment against all her assets anyway in that situation. I I I think uh not not to get too far into the weeds. If you wanna make this bankruptcy proof or at least have bankruptcy uh viability in the situation. If you have collateral pledged in this situation, they take a secured interest in this, whether it be a UCC one or a deed of trust on property or something like that. If this individual unfortunately had to file for bankruptcy later, your loan would still survive the bankruptcy as long as there's still collateral there to cover that. So that's the benefit of having collateral for a loan.
So I have a question. You know, we're concerned about collateral for that sort of thing with tailored footwear, and I'm not sure why we're more concerned about collateral with this particular one. Than we are with the others. I'm not sure what, for example, some of these other applicants would have for collateral that would be. Um better, more valuable, or easier for the city than than what we have with tailored footwear. I mean. Adams Wonder Adams Wonderland, um. What collateral would they have? Should they end up going and defaulting on that? What collateral would despacho have for the city to collect on if they? Were to default? It's not something that we've been terribly concerned about with the other applicants. And I'm curious as to why this one is raising so much concern. She's been in business, if I remember correctly, for over twenty years. And has a.
Thirty years total and that as as a.
So and she's a very loyal following of customers. So I'm not sure why this one is raising red flags more than others. Go ahead.
Well, despacho does show property has collateral. Um the other one, the the playground one over there, um. You know, I just took it upon Mister Martin that, you know, he was. He looked into the application cuz at the time they he didn't provide it. Um so I wasn't sure, you know, we were we were in the dark on that. Um but yeah, despacho does show, you know, p- property as collateral.
Anytime you get a loan, you have to have collateral. Collateral. If you don't have collateral, it's easy to default on the loan because you're not losing anything, you know?
I understand that. I'm just wondering why this one.
I'm not picking on this one. I'm I want collateral on all of them. And.
This one's this this one seems to be ra- raising more red flags in that regard than others and.
Well, because I sorry, they didn't add collateral. Is that is that what I'm get? They didn't add collateral to their application? So there's nothing. She does have collateral. It does have on the application, but she did in her cover letter, she did list the. Three hundred thousand dollars in stock in her sh- in her store. She also owns a property. Um in town, so she doesn't, this applicant doesn't have any less assets than any of the other applicants. In my opinion.
So.
Okay. Further questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to the next one. Revolving loan r- fund request from Bonvinos Bistro and Bakery for thirty thousand. Approve a resolution authorizing distribution of a revolving loan fund to Bonvinos. Bistro and Bakery. Questions or comments on this item?
Again, with a Mister Mayor, and again, this is a long-term business that's been in town constantly expanding. Uh constantly meeting the needs of its uh um clientele. Uh weathered the COVID just like everybody else, but his main problem now is that. He has discovered he's he's has some other issues he needs to take care of, and this revolving loan will give him. Uh the opportunity to take care of it in a in a in a short manner. Um while he also has the ability to pay it back. I can't remember, but I think it seems to me that his his percent on his loan was three percent. I think most of the all three of them was at a three percent loan. Is that right, uh Ms. Horner?
It's in the contract. Let me look at the contract.
Things like one was two percent.
Which one?
I thought it was Bonvinos, but I don't quote me on that.
That's why she's looking it for me.
Let me look.
Yeah.
Uh his is two percent. Bonvinos is two percent.
But I figure that in collateral, we can always get that in cookies and birthday cakes, you know, so no. But it is a still is a is a good percentage and and he is a. As the term is, he's good for it. Unless you're quit eating donuts.
Further questions or comments? Okay, move on to item E. Correction of Resolution Two Thousand Twenty Four dash eighteen. Approve an amendment to Resolution Two the Two Zero Two Four Dash One Eight authorizing distribution of revolving loan funds to Heartlinks. Ms. Horner, you wanna comment on that?
This is a correction of the resolution that was done for this distribution, and these funds have been distributed to this um business. They have already made several payments on on the loan, but the resolution was issued in the personal, the name of the the business manager. Instead of the business name when that was done. And so this was the one that we did need to correct. So that's pretty, it's pretty simple. It's just an update of that.
Just more or less changing the names. Well, she did do all the work on it, so.
Okay. Next item then is cardiac monitor update replacement. Authorize interim city manager to execute an agreement to purchase cardiac monitors. Mister City Manager.
I'll turn this over to Chief Hobrick. Chief?
Good evening. So I'm trying to keep a really long story short. Um but as if we have read kind of through the uh the cover page there explains that we purchased uh three new cardiac monitors back in twenty sixteen. Um and so uh the shelf life for the service life, excuse me, of a of a cardiac monitor is ten years. And so. At that eight-year mark, we're coming upon the end of the service life or towards the end of the service life. Um so trying to prepare um for a replacement and in addition, um. We have a fourth ambulance that is currently not outfitted with a cardiac monitor, or at least one that is FDA approved. Um we uh started looking at different options. And so kind of in my research, I realized that in the eight years from when we purchased the last uh. Set of monitors to now, um we've seen about just shy of thirty-eight percent price increase, which is of course astronomical. About gave me a heart attack, which is why we need the cardiac monitors. Um but uh sorry, bad joke. Um but uh anyway, so I did some digging in different options um for replacement, knowing that the costs are just continuing to skyrocket. And so. Um going with the vendor that we've been with for for a number of years and has done very well for us, um being Zoll. They uh provided us some opportunities for replacement or re- or improvements. Um due to the fact that the current monitors we have now still have a couple of years of shelf life. So um to get into to brief things up. Um a bit more, we are able to participate in the upgrade program. So when the replacement cardiac monitor is to the tune of between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars to replace. Um we would be able to, in essence, turn in our current monitors and get a brand new monitor. For about sixty-one hundred dollars per monitor. So rough math, that's about a forty thousand dollar savings per monitor. Um if we continue to wait till the end of that two years, then that is null and void, because again, that the existing monitor has exceeded its service life. Um so what I'm requesting is to be able to participate in this upgrade program, replace our three existing monitors. Um for three brand new monitors to a uh. Much lesser expense. Um and in addition to purchase a fourth monitor, so our fourth ambulance is properly outfitted to. Um what our current EMS certification level, which is advanced life support. So um I did quite a bunch of documentation there. It might have been a little too much, a little daunting, and I apologize. Um but just to show the different options that we looked into, we also looked into a leasing program. Again, I I tried to cover every avenue to make this as as feasible as possible for the city. Um the lease program was. Out of this world expensive. Um they call it worry-free, but I think the worry be paying the bill. Um sorry, another joke. Um but uh anyways, this is my my proposal, my suggestion to council is that in order to completely um. Add a fourth monitor to our fleet, if you will, and to upgrade the three existing monitors, um. That is my proposal, and this is uh would be the budget amendment necessary to make that happen. Um but again, looking if we were way off two years, um that amount would go um. About three to four times that, so.
Questions or comments for the chief? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
The E series, no longer FDA approved.
Yes, so uh sorry, continue.
When when was that purchased? And I mean, is there something that that the company does about that in the in those situations? I mean, I I would imagine if you buy something, you kind of guarantee that it's gonna be, you know, approved, right, for a long period of time?
No, so back to so the straight answer is yes. Um the 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 long answer is they are, when I say they're outdated, they've been outdated. For many years. We've kind of limped them along as backups, um and we also use them as um in lieu of AEDs. Um so they've been pretty much in the back of the fleet for some time. That fourth ambulance I had mentioned was the uh outfitted with one of those E series. Um which apparently um from the documentation there, they were uh no longer FDA approved a couple of years ago. Um to try and keep this as uh. Appropriate as possible. Uh apparently, previous department leadership was notified of that and. Opted to not do anything about it. Um however, that's not my take on it. Once the uh the item is no longer FDA approved, we are liable to use it in any um. Malfeasance or anything that comes from that use, uh the city would then be liable cuz we've been made aware that it is no longer FDA approved. So. Are obviously, once I was notified, we've immediately pulled them out of service and would no longer use them. But with that, it creates that void in that fourth ambulance. So to answer your question, Mister Deputy Mayor. We've even gone past that point of even turning it in. I think the company offered us like a hundred bucks for all of them or something like that, kind of as. Mainly just saves us on disposal fees, but really, they're just pretty much big paperweights at this point. If that answers your question, sir.
So it was recently purchased, like within the past after?
The E series? No, no, sir. I'm sorry. Those were purchased a better part of fifteen, twenty years ago. They're incredibly dated.
Gotcha.
Yeah, they were just used as a as a reserve uh piece of equipment, pretty much.
Okay. Further questions or comments?
So the so. So the new ones that you're looking at, you're you're looking at getting, is it four?
It it would end up being a total of four, yes, ma'am. One being a new purchase, three being upgrades.
Okay. And those, again, with the the normal lifetime on the monitors is.
Are ten, yeah, ten years. So once we, if we were to, if council was to approve this this agreement or this purchase. We'd be good on cardiac monitors for ten years. We wouldn't have to revisit this till then.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
What what's the process on getting them upgraded? Are we gonna have the ambulances without these monitors or for a longer time?
No, sir. Part of the agreement with the company is that we actually get loners, and right now we have um one of them that's being serviced. And part of our agreement is that they send us a loner. And then once we receive that loner, we send the unit back for repair. So we will not, we won't be without um any equipment during the interim.
Okay. Mister Beeler?
Are the upgrades bringing up to the same time limit as the brand new one?
The the upgrade would would result in a brand new one. It's kind of looking at as like a I'm trading the old car in for a new one. Um they just offer a lot of incentives because they can take those units and then refurbish them and resell them and still make a little money off of them. Um so it would be a brand new unit that we would receive.
Okay, so they're not fixing the units?
No, no, sir. Correct. Yep. Sorry, I should have clarified a little bit. Yeah, so it would be a a whole new unit. The clock would start over cuz it is a brand new unit, yes.
Okay. Further questions? Mister Deputy Mayor?
Did did we look into grants on this?
So there are very few grants for this kind of uh machinery, just the fact that it is technology. It's very hard to get grants for technology. Uh most of the ones that we've looked at in the past have been um. Loans, if you will, or pretty much where we could submit and try and get for reimbursement. Um but up to this point, uh we have not had any grants that we've been made aware of that would be eligible for this purchase.
I will follow up if I could. So um on the website, the sole website, I I saw where they have an app uh. A grant assistant program?
Yes, so.
Did we look into that?
We've asked about that, and what that is geared for is very um rural impoverished. Areas where agencies are, you know, the type of mainly agencies where, you know, they're doing fundraisers to put fuel in their in their rigs. Um it is something we could try, but from the conversations that I had with the rep of it, it's. It's not in, the intent is not for agencies such as ours, unfortunately.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item. Now, we just got a couple of minutes here. Um Natural Selection Farms Bio Solids Agreement authorize the interim city manager to execute an agreement with Natural Selection Farms to haul bio solids from wastewater treatment plant. Mister City Manager.
Turn this over to Mister Sanchez.
Mister Sanchez?
Thank you. Good evening. So first, uh I just wanna start out by kind of going a little bit about what is bio solids. Uh bio solids is is a byproduct of wastewater, uh part of the treatment. Uh so once we we go into the treatment out of primary and secondary treatment, we'll end up with a sludge. That sludge then is fed to the digesters, which we have anaerobic digesters. That sludge then is fed to the digesters, which we have anaerobic digesters. That becomes food to the digestors of the microorganism that breaks down the sludge, and we end up with methane gas, but then we also end up with biosolids after that. So biosolids is something that we need to get rid of. We also have, we're under a biosolids general permit. It's an NPDS permit that we also have to comply by. So part of that, then, we de-water, we feed our de-watering system to remove as much water as we can. Prior to two thousand and eighteen, we we had a lagoon, and it was going out about one percent solids. So it was costing us at that point, we by now would have been over a hundred thousand dollars a year for the hauling of biosolids because it was basically just sludge in liquid form, palled with tankers. So in two thousand and eighteen, we went in, it was approved to go in with a screw press, which now we're removing about twenty-two percent. It's coming out in a cake at about twenty-two percent solids. We also have drying beds where, because it's a cake, we can continue to dry it throughout the summers and remove a lot of that moisture that's in it, which makes it lighter. So then we can also store it because before we were also having to haul it out twice a year because the lagoon was just a little bit under a million gallons, and we had nowhere else to store it. The the problem with that, too, is because the farms around here can only land apply in the spring and fall, and so therefore, you're limited to when you can apply the 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 sludge. So by having the 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 drying beds, we can dry it, and we can store it until we're ready to haul once a year, which is in the fall and right before the winter. By doing this, Natural Selection Farms, which is the company that hauls for basically every municipality around, they even bring it in from the west side because, again, the west side doesn't have the dry weather that we do, so they can't dry it the way we can. So they bring it over. So what we're looking here is is a an agreement to continue hauling. Not only do they haul it, but they also do all the testing that is required by the state because then it has to be land applied. Land applied, we have class B biosolids, therefore, it can only be applied to certain crops, nothing that would be consumed directly by humans, but you can grow hay, grass, or alfalfa, and the cow will eat that, and you eat the cow, and that's fine because it went through another digestive system. So they will monitor, they will test all those fields, they keep track of that, they report to ecology at the rate that they're being applied for. They keep track of that. Ecology then coordinates back and forth with them, with the farmers, at what rate they're going to apply. So what we do is then just call them once a year. They come, they haul it, we pay them at a rate per wet ton. To give you an idea of what it used to be, like I said, it would have been over a hundred thousand. Last year, they hauled out five hundred and three wet tons, which we spent thirty-five thousand dollars, a little bit over thirty-five thousand dollars for the year. And so although it is money, it is a lot less than what we were paying before, and they take care of all the testing that's required in the fields and applying it, they have all the equipment. And so what this is just the the agreement expired at the end of twenty-three, this would be another three-year agreement with an automatic two-year extensions. So it would take us into twenty-eight. Any questions?
Questions or comments, Mr. Beeler?
Have you ever looked into the way Tacoma does theirs with their Targrove system?
No, at this point, we'll, can you explain a little bit more about that one?
They take the sludge and they they have a field like we used to have, and they grow tomatoes in it, and then they mix it with wood chips and sand, and they stack it out there, and you can go and get it. It's great dirt and fertilizer to put on your yard, but not your garden.
Right. Well, because because we can't control that, and this is class B. If it was class A, you could do that. You could take class A. If we had class A, we would basically, the way we're drying it, stockpile it, and we could just give it away because you could grow it and do whatever you want. Back in two thousand and sixteen seventeen, when 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 the the screw press was first looked into, class A was a consideration. It is more expensive to operate and run it because you're going to add lime, it's a dirtier process for to just produce class A biosolids. So the city at that point decided to go with class B. It's less messy, less material you have to buy to create class A. You don't need all the the heat exchangers and and heating process to to bring it to that. So that's the reason that they chose class B.
All right, council, in the interest of time, since we're getting close here and everybody wants to have a break, the proclamations we can discuss in the regular meeting, and just a heads up for everyone, there will be a request to amend the agenda without objection at the beginning of the meeting. There is has to do with the subdivision task order, and the manager will explain that in full detail, but it has to do with that collapsed reservoir that happened up on on the hill here some months ago. So that's going to come up as well, and if there's no objection, we are adjourned, and we will reconvene at six thirty, and that clock is pretty close to accurate. So, yeah. And it's from now. For the record, all members of council are present. Hang on a second while I mark that off. And all members of staff who are indicated to be here are also present and accounted for. So thank you, everyone. The first item in business here is invocation. Do we have someone here this evening who is going to give the invocation? Seeing none, I ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, and, Raul, could you grab me the public comment sheet? First item is public comment. If you've signed up for public comments, I will call your name, and you please approach the podium, state your name, city of residence, and you will have three minutes to make your comments. And I have three names here this evening. First name on the list is Senator Curtis King. I do want to recognize the presence presence of Senator Curtis King here this evening, and thank you, sir, for being here with us.
Well, good evening. My name is Curtis King, and I do reside in Yakima. I am your new senator with the redistricting that has gone on, and so I thought it would be appropriate for me to come and introduce myself to to the Sunnyside City Council. I've had the pleasure of meeting several of you, and I hope somebody will tell me when my three minutes is up.
That is our clerk who will do that for you.
All right, very good. All right, there we go. But anyway, I I look forward to working with all of you. I will be your senator, and and we'll see how long that lasts with the elections coming up, but that's a whole different story. But I I want you to know that I have been the senator for the fourteenth district for seventeen years, and I have served on the Labor and Commerce Committee all of those seventeen years, and also have served on the Transportation Committee in the Senate all of those years as well. About five years as chair back from two thousand and thirteen through two thousand and seventeen of transportation. So that's kind of what people think of when they think of me. But, you know, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the fourteenth district. I try to serve all of the citizens within that district, but but I also try to make decisions that are not only good for for the citizens in the district, but also for our state. Try to be fair and honest and work with everybody that comes before me. And so I'll leave it at that, but look forward to working with all of you. My my legislative assistant's name is Lori Avery. You can obviously find how to get a hold of me online, and and you're more than welcome to call anytime, and I will do my level best to get back with you as quickly as I possibly can. I look forward to helping you in any way. If you think I can be of assistance, please give me that opportunity, and I would be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Well, at this stage, we don't typically ask questions, sir, but we do definitely thank you for being here this evening.
Pleasure's mine. Anyway, again, I look forward to working with each and every one of you. So thank you for the opportunity to to be before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next name on my list is Corey Visser.
Hi, my name is Corey Visser, and I live north of Sunnyside. Thank you for allowing me to share our feelings and our thoughts. We want to speak concerning the pride proposition at last month's meeting. Listening to everyone speak, we realized that most of the discussion avoided the real issue. We heard about people's rights, who is right about their lifestyle, and who could also be a hypocrite. Each side presenting their position on lifestyles, each justifying their side. We would debate these issues forever and never come to an agreement, so we'd have to agree to disagree. This proposition has a high degree of probability of coming up again next year. The real issue on the table is this: Do you, the city council, or any level of government have the right, duty, or obligation, or even the power to grant one group of people an advantage, position, or favor over or at the cost of another group? If someone wants to mark down, march down the street with a sign, whether political, religious, or holding a Bible, or telling others about Jesus Christ, we have that right to do so. Government or council should not grant them any advantage or platform to do so. Something to consider: If we wish to form a group and petition you, the city council, for a German or Dutch Heritage Month, or even a Hillbilly or Redneck Month, would you even consider it? We'd be willing to wager or bet there are more rednecks than GBTQ+. But that's really not the point here. We've all heard about our rights last month. They and we have the right to worship and to celebrate however we want. Thank you, God bless America. We believe the city does not have the right and should not use its power to grant anyone certain privileges. Otherwise, we also have the right to petition the city for a Redneck Month, and if you grant their proposition, you would have to set precedence by which you would not deny us. Would you allow or condone the flying of a Confederate flag for Redneck Month, as it seems to be the flag associated with rednecks?
I'm going to finish. I'm Gary Visser, and I live north of Sunnyside as well. Recently, Supreme Court Justice Samuel Alito flew the Appeal to Heaven flag. This created an uproar. Of any flags, this one should be flown without contention. It was flown in this country by George Washington before the Stars and Stripes even existed. There are groups that have issues with Judge Alito. They have been combative. The flag was flown as his personal residence. He did not fly it over the courthouse. He did not allow one group to fly a flag that is contentious to another group. Again, you should not consider flying the LGBTQ+ flag for the same reason. We appeal to you as a council. You you all should and need to remain in neutral neutral in situations like this. You should not even take these propositions under consideration. In a way, you're all judges, and may still remain impartial, even though you may think personally it doesn't matter, or you want to be cordial to people. You are setting a precedence. What you decide may affect other cities and counties. Be careful what ground you tread on. This is the issue being debated, not whether someone thinks they have rights and you must cater to them or us. They do not have the right to their desires at the cost of others, and you should not grant it to them. We thank God for the grace he gave you on the vote last month. This places you in neutral position and gives you time to reconsider your ultimate stand on this issue. Remember Newton's third law, which is for physics, but it also pertains to life. Every action has an equal and opposite reaction, and all decisions have consequences. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other names on the public comments sign up sheet. Okay, next item on the agenda, the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following: The minutes of the April twenty-two two thousand and twenty-four special meeting, a study session, the minutes of the April twenty-two two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting. Payroll vouchers, approved payroll vouchers, number one one nine five one five through one one nine five two six, and wire transfers as listed for six hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for the period ending on June ten, two thousand and twenty-four. Claim vouchers, approved claim voucher numbers one zero nine four four one through one zero nine four nine two, and wire transfers as listed for two hundred forty-three thousand six hundred nine dollars and eighty-nine cents for the period ending on June seven, two thousand and twenty-four. Approved claim voucher numbers one zero nine four nine three through one zero nine five five seven, and wire transfers as listed for three hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twelve cents for the period ending on June fourteen, two thousand and twenty-four. Council members, are there any item that council would like to remove for further discussion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Can I make a comment about the new the new way it looks? I don't, I don't like it. It eliminates a lot of the the details. I mean, just going off of that new format, I mean, I could probably sit here for the next thirty minutes and ask questions, but I'm not going to do that. So I don't know if maybe there's a way to do it differently or change.
I have requested some updated reports, and they haven't been able to get them to me yet. So going forward, I either had to choose this time, putting the checks in check order so that you could actually see that we weren't missing any checks or providing you with the detail that you're used to. And for the purposes of a check register, I chose this way, but I'm hoping to be able to get them to develop the report so that we can do both next time, and so hopefully we won't have that issue. But I am still happy. I have a list of all the checks here, and I can give you more detail if you'd like any information on anything that's listed.
Isn't this, it doesn't look very much different than?
The payroll one is the same, but the the claims one, we used to have the individual invoices below each check and the like, the the fund from which the payment was issued. And so software migration is never the fun thing that we think it should be.
All right, that being said, is there any item that you'd wish to remove, even though we have less information to work with? Seeing none, what is the desire council on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Counsel Hart, second by Counsel Ripley, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any debate on this item? All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I two vote aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Active agenda. All right, we have a request to amend the agenda this evening, council, to add item I, the Swan Ridge Subdivision Task Order. If there's no objection, we will add that to the latter part of the agenda.
Objection.
With no objection, we will move forward on that. Thank you. Item A, Development Fund American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA approval. Approval resolution authorizing the use of ARPA funds in the Development Fund for Community Improvement Projects, including nuisance abatement, revolving loans, and other projects as approved by council, not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Mr. City Manager.
Turn this over to Ms. Horner.
Ms. Horner.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor. This resolution will just update the authorization for use of funds that are currently sitting in our Development Fund one seventy, which are split between abatement usage and the revolving loan fund, and it allows council a little bit more flexibility to approve the amounts for potential other projects as they come up. This is not increasing the overall amount that is approved at this time or asking for any additional approvals, just updating the city's ability to use the funds for either or instead of for, you know, a certain amount for one and a certain amount for the other.
Council members, questions or comments for Ms. Horner? Mrs. Hart.
As as we talked about in the work work session just an hour ago, I I think this is a good way to go to keep that money. So if we need to have, if we end up with more revolving loan applicants as opposed to abatement programs, we can still use that money. It's it's still designated for particular product, a particular type of project. Is that right?
Yes, and one other thing I did forget to mention in the study session, and I apologize for just seeing it on my notes right now. At the last meeting, we, or at our retreat, actually, we discussed using some money out of this development fund for a city cleanup date, and this this resolution allows for that because I did put that clause in there for other or other projects as determined by council. And so I apologize for not having mentioned that previously.
Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's good to know. Further questions or comments, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
So is it would be just used for like abatement stuff, right? Now, not to open up the application process again? Okay, thank you.
All right, if there's no other comments or questions, what's the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Okay. Okay.
All right, motion by Counselor Beeler, second by Deputy Mayor to approve a resolution authorizing the use of ARPA funds in the Development Fund for Community Improvement Projects, including nuisance abatement, revolving loans, and other projects as approved by council, not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I too vote aye. Motion passes. Item B, revolving loan fund requests from Despecho LLC for fifteen thousand dollars. Approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds to Despecho LLC. Mr. City Manager.
Turn this over to Ms. Warner as well.
Ms. Warner.
Thank you, sir. As we discussed in the study session, this application is complete and it's ready to be funded. The original application amount was made in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the allowable limit for a new business. And at the council's discretion, they could make a motion to amend the resolution to increase that amount to twenty-five thousand, should they choose to do so.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Ms. Warner? Ms. Ripley.
I'd like to make a motion to amend it to twenty-five thousand.
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion from Counselor Ripley, second by Counselor Beeler to amend this, this request, this resolution to twenty-five thousand from the fifteen thousand that was originally presented. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no?
No.
I too vote aye, so the motion passes. All right. So we have a motion to, we amended the motion. Any further questions or comments on item B? What is the desire of council on item B as amended?
Approve.
And that was, Mr. Beeler, second? All right, we got a motion by Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Beeler to approve the resolution authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds to Despecho LLC in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
I too vote aye, motion passes. All right, item C. Revolving loan fund requests from Tailored Footwear for forty-five thousand dollars. Approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds to Tailored Footwear. Mr. City Manager.
Turn this over again to Ms. Warner.
Ms. Warner.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Mayor. Again, as discussed in the study session, this application has been completed. We have everything needed on file. The original amount that was requested by Tailored Footwear was fifty thousand dollars. So just as the previous one, the council is welcome to amend the request to the maximum, which was fifty thousand dollars, or to move to approve it as it is, or to send it back to the commission as they would like, but the application is complete and recommended by the commission.
Council questions or comments for Ms. Warner? Ms. Ripley?
I'd like to make a motion to amend it to fifty thousand.
Second.
I'm writing slowly, apologize. All right, we've got a motion by Counselor Ripley, second by Counselor Hart to amend this amount from the forty-five thousand dollars to fifty-five thou, or to fifty thousand dollars. Debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of amending the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No. No.
Okay, so.
Maybe a show of hands.
I'm gonna go down, we're gonna do a roll call vote. I'm just gonna ask us to go down the line here. Mr. Beeler? Hang on just a second, I gotta write all this down. Ms. Vasquez?
No.
Ms. Ripley?
Yes.
Ms. Rostow?
No.
Deputy Mayor?
No.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
And I'm going to vote in favor of it. So that is two, four positives, so the motion passes with four to three. All right. So now that we've amended that amount to fifty thousand, approve a resolution authorizing distribution of revolving loan funds to Tailored Footwear. Further question? Okay, you made the motion. Okay, we got the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Beeler to approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds to Tailored Footwear. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed, no?
No.
I heard two noes. I too vote aye, so, sorry, plus. Okay, motion passes. Next item. Revolving loan fund request from Bonvino's Bistro and Bakery for thirty thousand dollars. Approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds to Bonvino's Bistro and Bakery. Mr. City Manager.
I'll turn this over to Ms. Warner as well.
Ms. Warner.
Thank you very much. We do have Mr. Roger Hazard from Bonvino's available here to answer questions. Your council has not yet had the opportunity to talk to him about his application, and I did want to let you know that he did turn in the missing items to City Hall today, though I have not had a chance to review them. He did, he did bring them in, so hopefully, once funds would be approved, we would be able to release them.
Council, questions or comments for Mr. Hazard? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I really enjoy your, your location. It's, it's wonderful, you know.
Thank you.
You could see that it's, you're building to it, you're adding stuff to it. You know, and, and more or less, the, the funds, you know, are going to reduce your, your costs overall, and for a security system as well to protect your, your, your business. So yeah, I just wanted to make that comment that I like, I like, I like the idea, and the business is great for, for the community and for everything you do for, for the community.
Thank you. Thank you. I love living here.
Further questions or comments for Mr. Hazard? Mr. Beeler?
Yeah, I, same thing on Mayor Pro Temp, the insulation you're gonna do, and that's gonna be really huge. That's gonna be cost saving for the rest of the time there, so I'm glad you're putting the money to good use.
Further questions or comments?
Well, just, could you maybe, excuse me?
Ms. Rostow.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rostow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to make a comment too. I, I frequent your restaurant quite often and, and, and I, I love it. My family goes there. I go there for, sometimes for work meetings and, and so I, I really just wish you all the best as you embark on making these renovations to, to your restaurant, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you around.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Just, just for the audience's information, could you just say what your improvements are? I, I know that it has to do with some HVAC sort of things or insulation. Could you?
So, so how this all started is the camera started going out one by one. And I could really figure out what was going on, you know, I thought it was actually the receiver that was giving the problems. And so I had a gentleman come in to look at it, and the wiring is going bad, and he said, "Do you know you don't have any insulation up there?" And he said, "That's causing the problem." And he goes, "Well, how much are you paying for your, your power?" And I explained to him, he said, "Wow." He goes, "That's probably three times as much as you should be paying, and my limits outside have been going down. I just put new fans in this year. I put in a new compressor in this year, and they're just running twenty-four seven pretty much." And so it all makes sense. And so I looked into the cost of insulation, which is not cheap. And after the, this was after the whole remodel job that, that we need to give the restaurant in the first place. And so that's what I would like to use the money for, is to put the insulation in, fix the wiring, the cameras. And, yeah, so.
And continue to serve wonderful food.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's probably the most important.
Just one last comment as well.
Go ahead, Ms. Vasquez.
I just want to say thank you. You guys have catered to us before, and then your guys' space there to have meetings is really amazing. And I love your pastries and just really good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'd like to, if, if there is some money left over, I'd like to redo the conference room. The, the carpet's really bad. I'd like to remove that. I don't think I'm gonna put carpet in there, but we'll paint the floor and, and make it a little, little nicer atmosphere in there, so.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, any questions or comments for Ms. Warner, Ms. Warner on this one? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Was the, the thirty thousand?
Write it down, sir.
Was that the?
Thirty thousand dollars was the request, and that is what was recommended by the commission.
Further questions or comments? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Vasquez to approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds to Bonvino's Bistro and Bakery. Debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I too vote aye, motion passes. Item E, Correction of Resolution two-zero-two-four dash one-eight. Approve an amendment to Resolution two-zero-two-four dash one-eight, authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds to Heartlinks. Mr. City Manager.
I'll turn this over to Ms. Warner as again.
Ms. Warner.
Thank you very much. This is just a correction. We noticed that we had an error in the previous resolution for releasing these funds. These funds have been released to Heartlinks, and they have been making their appropriate payments, but we just needed to update the resolution so that it matched the contract for distribution of funds to the correct name of Heartlinks.
All right, questions or comments for Ms. Warner on this item?
Yeah, so originally it wasn't set to Heartlinks, right?
Correct. The resolution was, the original language in the resolution listed the, the business manager's name personally, instead of Heartlinks.
Perfect, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
To approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Vasquez to approve the amendment to Resolution two-zero-two-four dash one-eight, authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds to Heartlinks. Debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I too vote aye, motion passes. Item F. Cardiac monitor update slash replacement. Authorize the interim city manager to execute an agreement to purchase cardiac monitors. Mr. City Manager.
Turn this over to Fire Chief Hobrick.
Uh, just following up from our study session, one thing I did want to mention that I neglected to bring up in regards to Deputy Mayor Galvons' question. While it's not a true grant in the traditional sense, we would have the option to utilize G E M T funds, which we've spoken about before. Again, not a, a grant traditionally, but it is funds above and beyond our, our regular revenue sources. And not to speak for our finance department, but that is high likelihood of where we'd be utilizing the funds from if approved for the purchase and upgrades. Would I be correct in saying so, Ms. Warner?
Yes, and actually I can look up how much money is available in there if you'd like me to.
That would be helpful, actually.
One second. So at this time, because it takes a while for those funds to be approved, we do have about nine hundred thousand dollars in G E M T funding that we can now spend less the amount that we used to purchase that ambulance recently. And then the ambulance that you approved going forward. So there's about three hundred thousand dollars there to use at this point, and there's still about nine hundred thousand dollars that we're waiting for approval to use as well.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
We should have, I just got notice that we should have that this coming month of July. We'll have the clarification, the final number on that amount as well.
On, on half of it, I think. So then there'll be another four hundred and eighty, but.
That's correct.
It's a long-term process getting that, that money approved for use after they give it to us, so we just like to be careful.
Right. Questions or comments?
I got a question.
Mr. Beeler.
Are we going to the rest of our equipment and seeing what else is outdated at this point?
Yes, sir. Very, we've, we've been calling it spring cleaning.
Okay.
But yes, sir, we've been going through and making sure that we are up to snuff, if you will, on, on all of our equipment.
Thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Who seconded? Ms. Ripley? Was that you?
Ripley.
All right, we've got a motion by the Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Ripley to authorize the interim city manager to execute an agreement to purchase cardiac monitors. Is there any debate on this item?
I, real quick.
Go ahead, sir.
Should the resolution read differently? Because it makes him sound like we're purchasing monitors plural, that we're just upgrading three, right, and purchasing one?
We're trading in three to replace them with three brand-new ones and then purchasing fourth one outright.
So it is still.
So we are essentially purchasing.
Okay. The program is just called an upgrade program.
Gotcha. Further questions? All right. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? I too vote aye, motion passes. I'm sorry, Mr. Beeler, you're just.
I was too late.
Never late.
Okay. Item G, Natural Selection Farms Bio Solids Agreement. Authorize the interim city manager to execute an agreement with Natural Selection Farms to haul bio solids from the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. City Manager.
I'll turn this over to Public Works Director, Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. As I had mentioned in the, in the previous meeting, what bio solids is. So yeah, what we're looking for here is just go into a new agreement. The other one expired at the end of twenty-three. To continue for Natural Selection Farms to haul the bio solids, which then gets used as fertilizer in the fields as we were talking about. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions for Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Beeler?
How long is a contract good for? And are you capped on price increases?
The, the contract is for seventy dollars and fifty-four cents per wet ton for three years, with an automatic extension for two right after that. So it'd be good till twenty-twenty-eight, end of twenty-twenty-eight. Also, what this is paid through is already in the budget for, out of the wastewater budget, because it's an annual expense, so it's already calculated into wastewater's budget.
No questions, Ms. Rostow?
Is there a reason why the amount isn't listed on the resolution, on the cover page?
Because it really, that, well, I, I guess I could have listed it seventy dollars and fifty-four cents, but there isn't an exact amount because it depends on how much wet tons are produced per year, and that's gonna vary.
Oh, I understand.
We don't have an exact number every year. That'll vary depending on the city growing or certain changes that might have came through the city. Could be operations at the wastewater plant where it might have changed a little bit. That's gonna change the, how much is hauled out.
Okay, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
On the contract, section six, subsection C, it says price adjust, adjustment for change in law. An NSF may, after notice, generate increased the minimum service fee by one hundred percent. What's the minimum service fee and what are the odds that the law's gonna change regarding this?
Based on the way we've always ran with them, it's never changed. It's always been the set amount that they given us. It's broken down right there into what is considered hauling and what is other fees. They've always been pretty good with it. Like I said, it's something that we never had an issue. They haul for every other municipality. So, yeah.
This specifies that it's change of law, so the only reason that they would change the cost to the city would be because of a change in the law, correct?
It could, yeah. And again, that going back to the NPDS permit, they have regulators that they also have to meet requirements. And so if for some reason something changed that was for some reason unknown, coming from the state, then maybe something like that could change.
And this just gives you, I'm sorry.
Were you finished with the questions?
No, they're just on the same question. So we don't know what the minimum, minimum service fee is. I mean, if, if, I guess it's important to know, right? If it, if it's twenty thousand dollars, you know, potentially they could increase it for another twenty thousand dollars. You know, instead of spending, what'd you say we spent in twenty, two thousand twenty-three? About thirty-some thousand?
About thirty, yeah, just under thirty-six thousand.
I mean, I'd like to see the, what, what the minimum service fee would be on that.
Well, that would be per wet ton, so the minimum would be whatever they haul out. There, we're always gonna be producing that. We're not gonna go a year without producing bio solids. It is, again, it is what's generated after the treatment. So we're, we're still gonna have, we're never gonna have just a minimum. It is what we produce.
Okay, Ms. Hart's ahead of you, ma'am.
I, I'm just, you mentioned a number, I forgot. I'm just, you mentioned a number, I forgot what it was, but this was per wet ton is a price you named.
Oh, seventy dollars and fifty-four cents.
Right, so that's kind of your minimum base.
If we produce one wet ton, that would be the minimum plus the weight of the.
The weight of the scale. So you would factor your, like you said, you would never ever just send out one ton, that would be silly. You know, when you probably have, what is it, normally fifty or something? You said another number, five hundred?
Last year, yeah, we produced about five hundred and three wet tons. Again, that number could go up, that could, number can go down. More likely will go up every year just because we keep adding more housing developments and businesses and.
You just, you do have a base number, but that's just.
So the base, yeah.
It just fluctuates, sort of like the wet tons.
So one wet ton would be the base.
Ms. Frosto?
He answered my question I was going to ask with Counselor. Excuse me, asked about what we produced last year and if there's any trends with the years. And you just mentioned that it's increasing every year and throughout the five hundred and three wet ton. Per wet ton, is that correct? Using the right language? Okay. Yeah, just wanted to make note of that.
Okay, further questions or comments, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Do you know which RCW that would change or was associated with this?
No, no, that would, no, you would not know. I mean, that's, I mean, at this point, that's the, an NPDS permit, again, it's a five-year permit. So they, nothing would change there within five years. Right now, we're actually in the process of renewing that NPDS permit, waiting on ecology to renew that.
Ms. Horner.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out that in section eight also, there is a CPI adjustment plus one percent for non-fuel related costs. And then there is a small adjustment on an annual, on an every six-month basis where they review the fuel-related costs. So there are sort of normal inflationary cautions, precautions for the vendor. So there will potentially be fluctuations in price for that.
And Natural Selection Farms has been hauling our bio solids for how long?
Probably since.
You started?
Yeah, as far as I know, Natural Selection Farms has been hauling around here for over thirty-some years.
At least.
Forty.
And they're, to my knowledge, pretty much the only option that we have, is that correct?
And really, the reason for that, again, is because they also have the agreements with the farmers, with the land where it gets applied. Because, again, all that has to get reported to the state. You, the state wants to know where it got applied, at what rate, and at how the soil is taking up what you applied. So they're keeping track of exactly at the same point, the, every year they'll measure and see if that nitrogen is in that first foot, the second, and the third. So if you apply and the crop is taking it up and using it in the first foot, you can continue to use it. If it gets into the second foot, you can still do it, but they're going to monitor it closer, because they don't want it and change your application. If you get into the three feet down, then you can't use that field anymore. It needs to rest. You need to till it, you need to find a way to now get rid of it before you can land apply again. So they keep track of all that. They have personnel that watches over that. They send ecology the reports that they need to see in order to continue to use that. For us, we just call them after we do our testing, which is the five oh three, that it's a pollutant. So not only is the level and concentration of nitrogen, but also all the pollutants that are in it have to be within a certain range, so that it can be land-applied.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Vasquez.
Yeah, so in response to Deputy Mayor, you could find RCW chapter in seventy-eight point two oh five.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Just one more, Ms..
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
The only other section, I don't know if it's a problem, but it automatically extends for two additional, you know, the contract. It's, is that normal that we do that, just automatically, or I mean, should we just?
Well, at the end of the three, we have the option whether we do or they do to just at that point say, let's revisit this and redo it. If we don't want to do any changes at that point, it automatically just will go for the next two years. That's, that's what that means.
Question.
Ms. Frosto?
Oh.
I thought you were asking. Okay, if there's no further questions, then what is the desire of council on this item?
Let's authorize interim city manager to execute agreement with Natural Selection Farms to haul bio solids from our wastewater treatment plant.
I'll second.
Alright, thank you for reading that, Ms. Hart. Motion by Ms. Hart, second by Council Vasquez to do exactly what Ms. Hart read. Debate on this item. Hearing none, what is, I'm sorry, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. I two vote aye, motion passes. Item A, July Proclamations. Provide direction regarding the proclamation city council would like to consider issuing in July. So this is not an item that we're going to vote on, but council, city clerk makes, makes an effort to get things ready for our proclamations. And at this point, Madam City Clerk, I don't think you've received anything for the month of July, have you? So is there proclamations that council would like to see made for July? Ms. Vasquez.
Could we do Independence Day, even though I know it's about to be next week, right?
It has to be, yes.
Let me see.
Think we.
Yeah, so then it would be Monday.
We can, we can, we don't have to, but we can. Okay. Ms. Frosto.
Not saying you're being silly, I just think it's sort of, everybody knows it's the Fourth of July. You know, it's like we have an actual day and we.
I'm sorry, thank you. Sorry, I got cut up actually listening to you. I just, I was doing some research and I found there's, I think it's National Disability Awareness Month, too. I think that's one of the ones that was a little, that kind of stood out more as I was doing some research earlier today.
Can we do those in July? That way we can get all the wording correct and stuff for the, because I think there's probably a proclamation out there that's already.
Right, well, we're not, I don't think we're going to look at doing these proclamations tonight.
No, no, you're looking for.
Any other ideas? Okay, well, we've given Independence Day and disability awareness. And if anyone has other ideas come up, or if there's any members of the community who would like to propose a proclamation, please make sure that comes into City Hall, to the City Clerk's office. And we will talk about that at our next regular meeting at the study session and either make the proclamation or not, depending on how council votes.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
The National Disability one, I see National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and that's in October. Is there? There's the Disability Pride Month.
There's Americans with Disabilities Act on July twenty-sixth.
Can you send me that?
Yeah.
And I will work some.
That's the one I saw, Americans with Disabilities Act. Yeah, I can send it to you.
And that's sometimes the struggle, too, is we don't all look at the same websites. And sometimes those websites that we search don't come up with the same information, so it seems a little bit confusing sometimes, because there is so much out there on the internet. I always fall into the trap of believing what I see on TV, they just type it in and there it comes up. And I type something up and it doesn't come up anywhere close to that, and so I'm always disappointed. Alright, okay, so we have our agenda addition. Swan Ridge Subdivision Retaining Wall, task order with HLA, Mr. City Manager, you want to illuminate us on that?
I guess I'll start and then Ben will probably talk. So this is the retaining wall on the Swan Ridge subdivision that failed. And Mr. Riley, because of the insurance that was purchased on it, is going to go after the developer for the replacement and repair. But the problem is he can't do that until he knows how much it's going to cost. And HLA has said, we, it's kind of which goes first. So it was decided today that we probably need to have HLA determine the scope of work and what the cost is going to be so that Mr. Riley can do his portion. So at four o'clock today, I got a task order from HLA and I'm going to read you the important part here. It says, I just had it a second ago. It says, "Design Engineering, all work for Design Engineering Services shall be performed on a time-spent basis at the normal hourly billing rates included in our general agreement, plus reimbursement for non-salary expenses for the estimated fee of sixty thousand dollars." Which I'm sure Mr. Riley will recuperate at the time of the suit that, or the claim against the insurance of the developer to get that fixed. So what we're looking for is authorization to sign the task order agreement with HLA so that Mr. Riley can get the information he needs to move forward on his end and we can determine the scope of work up there. I believe in the emails back and forth, there's about four people in them, but I read that we are paying some rental fees on some fencing and things like that that are up there. I'm sure that'll all be recouped as well, but that's something that we're paying out of pocket right now, so it's something we want to get moving on sooner or later. But I'll let Mr. Riley have the floor or Mr. Sanchez, either one.
Mr. Riley?
In order to move forward with getting an estimate on what the costs are going to be for that, the HLA has entered into what they call the design phase for this. The issue we have is not only that, that what was there failed, but it also has to be constructed in a way that can handle the amount of water we're talking about for this type of need. And the only way to determine that is for HLA to do a design phase to get bids on this and what it would actually cost to do that going forward. That allows us the possibility, then if we have to bring a claim, which is kind of what we're working on at this point, we have to inform the people who designed this and built this in the first place that a claim is going to be filed and give them a chance to negotiate with us to see if we can be done without bringing a lawsuit. But we have to know the exact dollar amounts we're talking about. The only way to do that is for HLA to determine what it would cost to put it where it's supposed to be. That's why we had entered a design phase and that's why we need authorization for Chief Lemon to enter into a task order for entering in design phases.
And just to add on that, just as far as what expenses we've been dealing with at this point was, yes, we did put a temporary fence around the failed wall just to prevent anybody from walking around that. Second, if it does rain, which right now we're really not in that season, but if it was to become a heavy rain, our wastewater staff would would take that water and pump it into a lift station that's right next, just to keep that swell from filling up and creating maybe pressure against the failed wall. So at this point, it's just monitoring and we have a temporary wall or fence around it to keep anybody from getting around there. But so far, that's, that's pretty much all we're doing at this point.
Alright, questions or comments?
Just something we have to do.
I think so.
Yep, it seems like an overly complicated way to get to it, but as long as it holds water with the law and make sure that we don't get in any trouble, I think that's probably a wise way to go.
We just, we need a motion then.
We do. What is the desire of council on this item?
I think we need to proceed with allowing the city manager, interim city manager to make the necessary arrangements to begin the design phase in order to get some numbers so that we know how much to ask for a repair on the rich Swan Road Ridge retaining wall.
Okay, so that was your motion?
That's sort of my motion, I'm sorry, I was rambling.
That was her motion?
That was a motion. No, that was it, I was just kind of, my mouth is.
And I'm not going to try to repeat that entire motion. Thank you for reading that into the record, however, so that we can get that and transcribe that correctly. And a motion by Council Hart, second by Council Vasquez, is there debate on this item?
Mr. Mayor, if I had one more point with all of us, too, even if there was a claim being brought, this still has to be repaired in a way that'll make it functionable, because anything that results as far as damage goes from this, the city is now liable for. So it's going to have to get fixed anyway in this manner.
Don't vote me yes on that.
So, seeing and hearing no debate, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I two vote aye, motion passes. Alright, items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. If there's no objection, the following appointments will be approved. The Rules Committee met and we discussed all of these names and we bring them forward to council. So it's, if there's no objection, then we will move forward on it. Okay, so I'll read the list of names. On the Planning Commission, Ignacio Ramos. For the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Sierra Foster. For Municipal Airport Advisory Board, Ted Durfee. For Municipal Airport Advisory Board, Stuart Turner. For Municipal Airport Advisory Board, Leonard Beerly. For Municipal Airport Advisory Board, Adrian Obak. Is there any objection to any of these names?
Objection?
Alright, hearing none, they will be moved forward. Alright, if there is no objection on the Board of Parks and Recreation, we'd like to remove a name. And that would be Mary Schlinker. She has been absent more than she has been present recently. Which would indicate she has inability to be there for whatever reason, so. Alright, no objection to that, then that will be done as well. We still have some vacant seats, there's some names that we are still reviewing. So the process isn't finished yet. If there are people who would like to serve on a board or commission and have not yet submitted their name, please encourage them to do so. The applications can be found on the website, or you can go to City Hall and they'll print one for you, or whatever is necessary. These are opportunities for citizens to get involved in what goes on in the city, so. Item B. Other reports, announcements, and/or questions by council. And before we start, I've thought about this, several of you went to the conferences last week and I know it's like drinking from the fire hose and maybe trying to take a light sip and you just get overwhelmed. And you could probably talk all night about what you learned. The couple of you that I talked to over the weekend, you just were glowing with excitement. Ms. Frosto's feet were barely on the ground, she was so excited. But in the interest of time, if we can hit the high points, I know it's possible to download the PowerPoints and review all of that on our own time. So if you'd be kind enough to hit the high points on that, that would be wonderful. And I'm going to start on the far end of the table there from me, Mr. Beeler.
The shortest one, nothing to report.
Nothing. Ms. Vasquez?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Ms. Ripley?
Well, I went to the conference and I loved it. It was, I couldn't keep up with these young pups. I went to bed early and they. I loved it. My mind is boggled. But with good stuff. Okay, that's it.
Good, well, we look forward to you sharing your wisdom with us throughout the next year, all the things that you've gained, so.
It's already going on in my life, some of that wisdom is coming out, you know?
Oh, good.
There were really good seminars to go to.
That's awesome. Ms. Frosto?
Yeah, it'd be great to maybe bring some of these resources to like a workshop and, 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 and there is just many names and many resources that we actually have here in the county that I didn't even know about. If that would benefit our development in, in, in our community, so. Yeah, a lot of great information, but I will definitely not prolong the report back. My highlight, though, for AWC I have to share is that I got to meet Anne McFarlane. She is the parliamentary procedure, older lady with the dinosaurs who we watched and teaches, teaches us all how to properly engage in decorum, how to follow parliamentary procedures. And she adopts it from like the older versions of the Robert's Rules of Order and makes it so engaging. And I just had a fangirl moment, we all had to take pictures. I believe Counselor Vasquez, you have them, maybe we'll get to share them out. But we all took pictures with dinosaurs with her and it was really great just to take a class with her in person. And I think Counselor Vasquez and I had her autograph our motion charts that I brought with me today and I will laminate eventually, so yeah. It doesn't rip on me and that I will definitely make use of. Lot, did somebody say something? If I go, okay, and then just very quickly, y'all got the email and I just kind of went. If I go into, okay. And then just very quickly, um, y'all got the email and I just kinda went um, I don't, I, I printed like a few of these. Tomorrow, there's a resource fair um, at, or at the um, Community Center happening from six to eight and it's uh, brought to you in collaboration with from the City of Sunnyside. OIC, WorkSource, and there will be information around training programs, employment services, and I think financial aid if I'm not mistaken. Chief, I forgot, but.
They offer a lot of programs and they had a lot of different options. I'm not sure what all they're bringing.
Yeah, so there's a myriad of resources going on that would be great for families and, you know, young folks trying to look for training programs and jobs to go and attend. There will be free dinner. Um, and again, it's from sixty eight, the Sunnyside Community Center, and it has been shared on, online and on social media um, through the City of Sunnyside and I think a few of us have been resharing on Facebook as well. Um, so I'll pass that over to you and to Beeler and um, that wraps up my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fausto. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I myself also went to the AWC, met a um, a lot of people, made a lot of connections. I have a stack full of business cards I have to organize now. Um, but yeah, I just learned, you know, there's uh, there's a lot of differences uh, the way that other cities and towns do things, you know, like was able to get perspective of one city, you know, another city and um, you know, maybe, you know, in the future bring it forward to council and, and if it's something that, you know, we could adapt and, and we can make it work to simplify, you know, a lot of things. Um, that'd be a good, great, great asset. Um, also had uh, some questions about how the whole fireworks permits going. Um, are we getting a lot of permits sold? Um, what's, what's the idea behind? I mean, are we gonna offer the officers a list of permits that, that are, that were purchased? Um, you know, the, the consequences, the, the, the tickets. I, I really wanna see this uh, this year go, you know, pretty good. Um, wanna see a lot of, a lot of violations, uh, if they're not getting the, if they're not getting the permit, so um, make sure that you know, they really understand that, that we are gonna be cracking down on, on, on those violators. Um, but you know, my wife's not too happy because it wakes up the baby, but um, uh, hopefully, yeah, hopefully we get a, we get a good, a good year for Fourth of July.
Ms. Horner, are you able to look up the number of?
That's actually in the Open Gov system, so I don't know if, if Mr. Taylor has access to that. I don't have access to those numbers. Um, okay, but we can probably get an email together where we can look at the revenues and the number sent out perhaps um, tomorrow or later this week.
May I have a request? Just since it is the, the council meeting before Fourth of July, could we put it on record again for those who tune in on YouTube of, of what the process is gonna look like, like purchasing um, the fee for the purchase of the permit? And um, how um, I guess the policing um, uh, will be conducted that over the course of the fourth through the sixth?
Chief? Okay, so, um, so for the enforcement, if you do not have a permit purchased um, and have proof of that, when an officer contacts you for lighting up fireworks, you'll be um, issued in a fraction. Uh, I don't believe it's criminal in the code. I'm not sure how it was written. I think it's a city infraction. Yep, against municipal code. And then um, the permits are purchased online. And are they five? Do you know?
I, Corey might remember off the top of his head. Yeah, I believe they were twenty dollars and they're available for purchase online and they have all of the rules um, and regulations for, for um, everything you need to know in order to legally set them off. Um, it's all there on that application for you to look at.
All right, thank you for that.
So much.
Ms. Hart?
So, um, Ms., Ms. uh, Coun- Counselor Vasquez did bring up about the Fourth of July coming up next Thursday and as, as I want to invite you all to come down. The gates are gonna open at six o'clock at the Clean Sim uh, football field, which is the old football field now. It's not the big fancy one, it's the old one. Uh, we will have lots of food, we'll have lots of uh, games, and of course, a wonderful fireworks show which will be a safe and professionally uh, launched fireworks show. Uh, so it's not just you know, dad in the backyard burning the fingers off of his kids with a sparkler. Um, so I, I'd invite you all to come down to the football field for that. We'll have a twenty-one gun salute about eight, eight thirty. Uh, the Miss Sunnyside Court and the upcoming Miss Sunnyside uh, candidates are gonna be there, so you have an opportunity to meet them and and maybe buy a couple of tickets for their uh, programs. Um, again, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm always, I've been doing the fireworks show now or something similar to Fourth uh, Fourth of July for the last thirty years. Um, I kinda think it's about time for me to hand it off to somebody else, because running back and forth is getting harder and harder to do. So, but I do invite you all down, come down, bring your blanket, be prepared to wait a little while to get stark enough to see the fireworks, but there'll be games for the kids and uh, see if they can keep them busy, so. Um, come on down, celebrate the Fourth of July in a safe environment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So for myself, I spent an awful lot of time in the last few weeks, um, meandering around town, meeting and meeting people, talking with people at different uh, events in different places. I kinda make it my goal to try out and visit different places. Um, don't always get to do it as often as I like to, because you know, work continues to get in the way, but uh, it's always kinda fun to stop and visit people in different places. One of the things that I really enjoyed doing was this weekend, we had the ribbon cutting at uh, Despeto. And they have an impressive facility there. They've, they've done some remodeling, they've done some painting, changing things around. Uh, the menu looks really good. I didn't try any of the food, but um, you know, the bottle of pop that I had was absolutely delicious. But um, yeah, it was a good time and I, 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 I'm pleased that we awarded them the funds from the revolving loan fund this evening. I think that they have the potential to do very well. Um, also participated in the uh, AO Fest put on by the Rotary this weekend. And as usual, that was a good time. Uh, the crowd there was extremely well behaved. And um, the music was good. It was a mix of all kinds of genres and whatever music you like. It was probably played sometime that evening. And um, yeah, we all had a good time. And it's a great opportunity to meet community members that you don't see very often, because it's a yeah, it's like a high school reunion with every class present. It is a little weird to uh, sit down and, and share a beer with your children's friends from high school, because they are now old enough to be there. Um, that's a little strange, but at any rate, we had a good time. I think they, they run a good show. It was, it was really good. Um, just for council's information, I will be out of town over the Fourth. So if you don't see me at the Fourth of July activities, that's why, because I'll be in a different town. So um, I hope everyone has a great time. I hope participation is fantastic. And um, yeah, it's uh, I'm looking forward to Sunnyside really continuing to uh, to do its thing. Ms. Hart, you and your, your friends have done an amazing job over the years.
Sunnyside Lions are a hardworking group of people and we have some here on, on council too and so come out and give them a they're probably gonna be doing some of the games, I'm hoping. So we got, uh, it'll be fun.
Awesome.
It'll be fun.
All right, upcoming council meetings. Madam City Clerk?
Okay, for July eighth, we have the water system plan and a climate element task order. And we'll also put in the proclamations, the two that you requested. For July twenty-second, the stormwater rate analysis and the six-year transportation improvement plan. And that's it for now.
Okay, um, we do have the city manager applicants coming in and they will be visiting in July, so we're gonna keep our schedules open for, for that sort of thing. And also, long-term, I'm, I'm assuming that Ms. Horner's gonna wanna start planning some budget retreats and those kinds of discussions. And so be aware that those types of things will be coming down the line as well. So, yeah, August gets here quicker than we think it does. It shows up very fast every year. So um, keep those things kinda idling in the back of your mind. If you have any agenda items that need to be added to the agenda, the Wednesday before the council meeting is the deadline to get that on the agenda. And any council member is a- able to do that. So if you have something that needs to be put on the agenda, please bring it up. Items from department ads, Mr. City, City Manager?
I'll start with Mr. Valhalla on the end, please.
Good evening, City Council. Uh, what I have for you tonight is just a recruitment report for the month of June. So to date, uh, in the month of June, we have received twenty-six applications. We've held ten interviews. Um, we've hired for eleven positions. Then that includes our summer recreation aids out at the Community Center. Today was actually the first day of summer camp, so, so far so good. Um, for those uh, summer aides, uh, there's a total of ten positions and we had about forty percent of those positions were filled by returners. So those are people who filled those positions last year, so that's always great to have returners coming back. Um, in June, the positions we have filled were the lifeguards um, and the seasonal rec aids, and we are currently working to fill um, the maintenance, one maintenance worker, one rec coordinator, and one community and economic development director position. And that's the report for the month of June.
Good evening. Um, for us, we, with the security, we've got duo going on. We're about fifty-five percent through with that. Uh, hundred percent on the required departments and needed to have that to follow within the uh, uh, higher up governing bodies that are forcing that down. Uh, tickets for us, we're at seventy-eight tickets that are open right now, thirty-five were closed last week. And um, that's just about it. We're actually got a bunch of the gear in to start doing our network and stuff like that also, so there's gonna be some more big changes coming up over the next month or two. So, that's it.
Thank you. I, and I'm glad Mr. Mayor brought up the budget, because I did have a date I wanted to propose for you guys for the budget retreat, which will be at the end of August. But just to put it out there, um, right now I'm considering August thirty-first, which is a Saturday. Historically, we've always done that budget, that initial budget retreat on a Saturday. Um, so, and we're plenty in advance at this point, so if that's not gonna work, um, we can, we can work with some stuff, but that's the preliminary date that we're looking at right now. Um, the previous one would be, I think, the twenty-fourth. If the thirty-first wasn't gonna work for you, that would be like the backup date, but that means we have to get our stuff ready one week faster and it's always a crunch time, but I can do it if, if need be. Um, and then just to give you an update, we are, as you saw, the, the check register reports, we are fully in the midst of doing the software um, migration and it has been, just like all software migrations are absolutely just fun and lots of long hours and everything that can go wrong, does go wrong, but then fix it, so it's been, it's been really fun and exciting. But hopefully it'll get better and I hope to have some better reports for you guys next time that show those, all of those details. If I don't get them next time, please reach out to me if there's any particular ones that you want the details from, I'm happy to send you guys um, any invoices or anything like that that you need ahead of time, so we can get some of those questions answered for you. Um, other than that, that's all I've got.
Alrighty. So for Public Works, uh, I did, it came up here a little bit ago, but uh, on the six-year tip. Um, just to give you a little bit of, just to announce it, at the next council meeting, we will be presenting um, a little bit about that, because we need to amend that six-year uh, transportation improvement program um, list. Uh, so HLA will be here also to go through all the projects that we have in that six-year tip. Um, and because there's a process to go through um, before a certain deadline, so uh, we'll be bringing that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to let you know, just because uh, eventually you're gonna, there's an invoice that's gonna come in. Uh, one of the things that we have uh, for this year is it's in the budget for replacing the boiler uh, for the digester at the wastewater facility. But the current boiler that we have now had to go through a little bit of repairs to limp by until we get the new one. So they had to open it up, replace about two to three tubes and a plate welded. Um, so there was a little bit of work. Uh, it looks like that's all that they could find, so that hopefully will get us through. Um, uh, until we get the new one in. So just to let you know, uh, Coal Industrial is who did the work. Um, the pool uh, last Monday, it'll uh, went back in line. Uh, it was open to the public, I believe, on Friday. Um, we've been having some issues though, uh, at least for me, it seems like it's kinda not normal, but for some reason, we're getting people throwing glass in there. Um, I don't know if you guys have heard, um, staff has been having to clean that on a regular basis. Um, so anyways, that's something we're dealing with, but in case you hear it, it's not that staff isn't cleaning it up, it's just it's, it's happening every day.
Going in the pool?
They're throwing glass, whether it's a bottle, whatever, it breaks on the deck and then it ends up in, in the pool or on the deck and so they're, they're keeping an eye on it, they're doing what they can, but to me, it just seems not normal, but I, I don't know if this is in the past, but uh, it just seems like uh, it's happening more than just once or twice.
We have cameras down there.
There is some cameras, yes, but so far, I mean, they could be thrown some far either at night or from an area that, yeah.
That's a big change up from uh, from benches.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's all I had.
Dangerous, so we'll get it, yeah.
Ms. Riley?
No report at this time. We'll see if you have any questions.
Questions for Ms. Riley? All right, Chief?
So apparently the flavor of the week has been new softwares and I'm a victim of that as well. We were forced to go to a new record management system uh, about five days ago, so unfortunately, I also do not have analytics for you, so I apologize. Um, one thing I would like to bring up, if there's any interest from council, um, I'm a member, a board member of the Yakima County Trauma Care Council, uh, which is a governing body, kinda helps determine a lot of the uh, um, involvement of trauma agencies, including um, fire departments, EMS services, hospitals and the like. Um, but what I wanted to bring up is that right now there is a vacancy on the board, um, which is reserved for an elected official position. And um, I would strongly encourage a member of council, if interested, to participate in conjunction with myself uh, as a member of that board. Um, we are a very unique city in the sense of we're the only city in Yakima County that runs an EMS service. And so with that, I think it's very important that we have a voice on that board and a lot of those decision-making, so um, I'm not sure if this needs to kinda go to the boards of commissions, Mr. Mayor, but um, I would just like to bring it for some food for thought and future discussion if any council member would be interested um, in sitting in that uh, that vacant position. It would be, um, I think it'd be a large benefit to the city, so.
Council members or anybody who's uh, suddenly excited when they hear about that open position?
What, what days or times do they meet?
So it uh, is actually a very minimal commitment. They typically meet quarterly, um, and they canceled the third quarter meeting, so the next obligation would be and I just wrote it down, October third would be the next meeting. So normally it would be in August would be the next one, but due to fire season, they postponed it, so.
And where do they meet?
Uh, they meet in Union Gap at the uh, Office of Emergency Management, uh, right there, um, off of Redken Road there, kinda near the mall. So if anybody's interested, I will most certainly forward you all the information that you would need to participate.
Thank you.
Nobody's jumping up and down for it yet.
Well, I, go ahead.
I could do it if you did.
Go ahead.
I could do it.
Okay, is there any objection to Deputy Mayor filling that spot? No objection, sir. You are appointed to that position.
I think that's a, I think that's a really good.
Your vacant deputy mayor, I'll reach out to you shortly with that information, sir, if that works. Thank you.
Keeps us in the know and up to date.
And I was able to get the fireworks permits. Looks like we've issued eighteen of them. There's been thirty-four approved, but we're waiting on payment on the, the remainder, so, and I will get with Chief Lehman tomorrow and discuss how we're gonna communicate with the patrol guys. So.
Thank you in advance for all the work. And Chief Hobrick, know your team's gonna be out there and, you know, Fourth of July fireworks, fire and uh, yeah, yeah, got all our hearts. Yeah, hopefully not, but thank you all for, for, you know, keeping us safe.
And then I'm just working with departments this week to update the website, their pages. And then I also wanted to remind you that we have our interpreter on Zoom. Um, if you could just speak a little slower maybe, just so she can catch up.
Perfect.
Okay, so Police Department. Um, May twenty-eighth through June twenty-fourth, we handled seven hundred and eighty-five incidents, conducted two hundred and fifteen traffic stops, fifty-one arrests, uh, thirty-two were criminal non-traffic and twenty-eight were criminal traffic arrests. Um, infractions, non-traffic were three and there were fifty-nine traffic infractions issued. Year-to-date statistics, aggravated assaults are down, burglary, breaking and entering are, are, okay, aggravated assaults down twenty-one percent. Burglary, breaking and entering down twenty-six percent. Motor vehicle thefts are even from last year. Uh, murder and non-negligent manslaughter are even from last year. Robberies are up sixty-six percent. Robberies are up sixty-six percent. Sounds like a lot, but it went from three to five, so it wasn't a huge jump. Um, theft from a motor vehicle is up forty-two percent. That went from nineteen to twenty-seven. Um, theft of motor vehicle parts or accessories uh, went from three to zero, so that's down one hundred percent. Um, and then weapons violations are are zero percent change fourteen uh, this year and last year at the same time. Um, we had our movie in the park. I get confused, I guess, Friday and a half ago, a week and a half ago on Friday. Uh, we probably had two hundred and fifty people there. Um, plus, it went really well. Um, the only, the only issue we had was it's June and it's the longest time of the year, uh, longest days of the year. So uh, it it started about an hour and a half later than we had hoped because the screen wouldn't show the movie and so um, it it was close to, it was probably eight thirty, eight forty-five before we were able to actually start it. Um, August sixteenth, the Police Foundation is gonna have a golf tournament out here at Black Rock. And uh, in conjunction with that, a silent auction, so if people are, August sixteenth, it's a Friday. So if people are interested, um, sounds like we're gonna have some pretty good stuff in the silent auction already. And uh, if anybody golfs, put a team together, we're interested, so. Um, I think the tee time for golfing is at uh, two. But um, as far as the silent auction, people will be able to uh, bid online as well, and on like Facebook, they'll post the items, so. Um, I I'm a member of Morning Rotary, um, and so I I worked at the AOFest, that uh, I saw the mayor there and I saw the deputy mayor there. And it was a really, really good event. There wasn't any issues at all. It wasn't any problems, anybody had to be removed or was overserved or anything like that. It went really well. It was a good fundraiser event. And uh, about a week and a half ago, I was elected the vice chair of the Crime Lab, uh, so just wanted to let everybody know that, that's.
Yak, so Yakima County.
Yeah.
Good on you.
And that's what I have to report. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and for your reports.
All right, so that concludes the regular meeting. Uh, next item is an executive session. Uh, council's asking for thirty minutes, although that may expand. Um, it has done in the past. The qual- uh, the reason for it, to evaluate evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee, also to consider minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or leased with public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of a decreased price. The RCW is to go with that. First one is RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero parentheses one G. And the other RCW with the real estate is RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one C. Action is possible, but not necessarily. We're not sure yet. So, all right. So, who did you want to?
Probably Lucia, Ben, and Jamison.
Okay.
The, the, you guys are gonna have staff tomorrow, but I'm in a training with WCI, so I won't be there, so.
Don't throw parties without the chief.
We are back in open session as of have action.
Like to make a motion to cancel the July two meetings on the eighth.
Oh, okay, the meetings on July eighth?
Yes, both meetings.
Okay, cancel on July eighth, two meetings, okay? We have a motion.
A second.
All right, we got a motion by Councilor Beeler, second by Councilor Fausto, to cancel the two meetings on July eighth, the study session and the regular council meeting. Debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I also vote aye, motion passes. All right, there being no further business to come before council and without objection, this meeting is adjourned at eight nineteen PM.